I will call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to public comment, I have not been approached.
Nope, neither have we. We have no contacts.
All right, thank you. Moving right on to the student board member report. Drew.
You know, you want to. Now, as a senior who may or may not have to make up snow days, I'm not too happy about that.
We can change that.
I might be very happy.
And you've already had one, Drew. What else can you ask for?
But we're making that one up already.
Oh, that's true.
After now, it's kind of nice, but Student Senate is working on our dance marathon right now, and there's actually, one thing I wanted to share is that, I don't know if you've seen it on Facebook yet, but there is an online donation option where you can donate straight to the dance marathon, which is very handy. It's nice. And then we also got word from Best Buy that we can have, that they're going to supply us with a game room, so they're going to give us, I believe, five different gaming councils and TVs and everything, games to go with it. It'll be a nice addition to it. And a lot of schools around us who do dance marathons do have this kind of thing. I know Wes does for sure. And we're just, it should help us get, help us reach our goal of $5,000.
Circle's $5,000, okay.
The other thing we're kind of working on, and we've actually, we're going with bake sales for both these things on, I think Friday is Travis Fonda's, which, I was sitting over there earlier, and I was kind of wondering if, I'm remembering I told you about it last year, or I told you about it earlier this year. This must, this must be what teachers feel like all the time, but you know who Travis Fonda is, and then we're still working on getting items, toiletry items, that kind of With, let's see, we're getting towards the end of winter sports, which next few weeks we'll start going state, 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 which I hope to see our teams at state, 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 state. Wrestling, we have Linmar on Thursday, which, that was canceled earlier, and we are making that up this Thursday, and they're usually about fourth ranked. They're, they're up in the rankings on the state level. And last year we were, it came down to the last match, which went into overtime, and I, I was standing next to the coaches, and I couldn't hear what they were saying. So it'll be, it'll be a fun one. And then Saturday, we'll be at our conference meet, which will be at Waller. And then basketball, I actually made it to the Kennedy game on Friday for our boys. It was, the first half, it was great. I mean, they played a good game. And towards the end, I mean, Kennedy kind of beat us, but it was a good game no matter what. I was kind of surprised at the number of students there. It was a great turnout. Let's see, they are at Tuesday, they, on Tuesday, they are at City West, and then they are home on Friday against Dubuque Senior. And the girls are vice versa, of course.
Okay. Good. That's a job.
No problem.
Moving on to item E on the agenda, RSP and Associates.
Yeah, we're excited to have RSP and Associates here this evening. Clay Guthmiller's here to be able to help walk with us through a journey of potential discussions with attendance boundaries. We know as a growing district with our growing enrollment, this is one of those challenges that we, we face, knowing that some of our buildings are over capacity, and certainly the opportunity to focus on the future and make sure we provide that quality education for all students as we look to the future. So very excited to have Clay with us this evening, and I'll turn it over to Clay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of RSP and Associates and our president, Rob Schwartz, we want to thank you for the opportunity to work with you. We really look at this as a privilege to work with Cedar Falls Public Schools. I know that you have a rich tradition of education here. I've been in Iowa for some time, actually went to school in Fort Dodge, and so way back when, had the opportunity to participate against your fine school district, but I think all you have to do is look at the programs that you offer and the opportunities that you provide for your young kids. We're just really excited to be a part of that. And we're not new to working with you. We've had a relationship with you since, I believe, 2008 or '09, where we have done some things with enrollment reports for you. So we're excited about that and to come back and, and work with the board and with this committee. Want to thank Dr. Pat T. and Dr. Nessler for their work and helping us. We're excited to be able to assist the board in this upcoming project. Tonight, just, we're not going to spend a lot of time because we're going to, we're going to do a lot of work and get more involved on February the ninth, but we wanted to kind of prep, prep the board a little bit tonight on the process that we're going to be using. Our agenda tonight, we'll just make a few introductions. Want to talk a little bit about the boundary process that, that we are going to undertake. And then we do have some homework for you between now and February ninth in order to prepare for, for that meeting. Our presentation goals, pretty simple tonight, and I just kind of went through those. We're going to talk about the process and a couple other things. I think the other thing that's important that we'll talk about tonight, and we're going to talk about this at every meeting, is how important it is to have this transparent relationship and transparent process that we're going to go through with the committee, and making sure that the public and that everyone, the media and so on, are very much in tune with what we're doing. We want to have people understand what we're doing and what's going to happen when attendance areas are changed at some point in the future. So we'll continue to talk about this, and we'll bring it up at every committee meeting as we go along. I want to make just a couple introductions, certainly one, I want to introduce Ryan McKay. Ryan is a senior planner with us, with RSP, and he's going to be working with us on this project. He's back in the shop with the GIS stuff, and then also planning too, so we're really excited about Ryan being a part of this project. I just talked a little bit about myself. I've been in education for 40 years. I was a superintendent for 27. And the last nine years, I was in Johnston, and I've served in Kansas and in Iowa, and certainly look forward to, to working with you on this project. Just talk a little bit about our company. Not going to get into a lot of that, but we have been around since 2003. We're a educational planning committee or a company. We do a number of analysis. We do boundary analysis. We do demographic analysis for districts. We do an enrollment analysis, of which we're doing for your district. We do staffing plans and other things also. We are working mainly in, in Iowa, if you can believe that. The bulk of our business, we're a Kansas company, but we're working a lot in, in Iowa. Some of our most recent jobs that we've done is we, last year, we finished up in Johnston. We did the boundary analysis for Southeast Polk, West Des Moines. We're currently involved with Wakeze, Ankeny, and so we have a lot of work in the metro area and other parts of Iowa also. I think the, the biggest thing that, that I think is a, really makes our company is the accuracy of our enrollment projections. The whole genesis of what we're doing for you is creating an enrollment report that's going to project out for the next five years where your enrollment's going to be. And you're going to be able then to look at capacities of your buildings and all that other data, and plug all that and make decisions that are going to help you, obviously, in your facility planning, but in the kinds of education that you're going to provide your students. We're very proud of our accuracy. We project out at 97% or better in our five-year projection. So the data is very accurate and something that we hang our hat on a lot with that. There's just some folks that are working with us on the right-hand side, and Ryan is a senior planner for us, and he'll be working on this project. This just shows a little bit about where we're at. We're certainly a lot in the metro here. We're doing work in Nebraska. We're in North Dakota right now in three or four places too, and then in the Kansas City area. So we have a lot of places that, that we're doing, currently doing work. I wanted to show you and talk with you a little bit tonight about the boundary process, and you should have this on your, in your materials. But I would just point out two or three things. First of all, this is a very collaborative process that we're going to be using. And so we're going to have a lot of folks that are going to be involved in this process. We're going to have a couple meetings with Board of Education. Our first one will be on February ninth, where we'll be doing some planning during that time, and then we'll be coming back to the board after the committees completed their work, and you'll be taking a look at that final product before you make decisions on any approvals. There are five committee meetings and then one public forum. I would ask you to look at the key in the bottom right-hand corner. This really shows you the folks that are involved in this project and the very color-coded areas that, that go with that, certainly the board. The staff and administration is in the paint. And so our consultant-wise, we're providing the data analysis and then facilitating a series of committee meetings. There will be five of these meetings, and, and then after we've completed four meetings, where we've really come to some consensus as a committee on where we want to go, then we conduct a public forum. We take that work to the forum, and, and we want as many people there as we can get and as much feedback as we can get, and then that comes back to the committee after they've, after they have had the public forum, and then our work, which finally eventually gets to the board. And so one of the key pieces, and I know that, I think that you're working on that, or we've had some discussion, is the committee itself. Very important group, size-wise and the number of people that would be representing certain groups and so on and so forth, and I know Dr. Pat T. is, is working on that part, but that is really, really important. Sometimes board members are a part of that committee, sometimes they're not. Personally, being through this, the scenario numerous times, I think it's a benefit to have a board member or two that are on that, that are part of the committee, and, and can be a conduit to the board and really keep track of some of the things and the thinking that's going on. So this is something that we'd ask you to take a look at and refresh your memory about how that works. Our public forums are a little bit different too. We don't hand the mic to someone and let them just have 20 minutes of whatever. We construct a short meeting prior to the public forums, and then we have a series of tables that we set up that are manned by committee members and RSP associates and probably some administration. And we have people come, and we want to hear all their comments. We record everything that they say and do, and then we have all that information, rather than having this big meeting maybe in an auditorium where it's two or three people have a lot to say and a lot of others don't get the chance. So we're really proud. We have a lot of success in our public forums. Homework for you. One of the linchpins of our process is that the board needs to establish some prioritized or some criteria. Sometimes they'll prioritize them, but they need to be able to get some criteria on paper that will be the driving force for the committee. And we always look at the first two things to be considered, that exceptional education must take place in each facility in every option. What we're saying is, is that whatever we do, there has to be the same types of, of opportunities for students, and what we say is there just has to be an exceptional education in each building. We expect that. We don't think one building should be any better than the other, more opportunities, less opportunities, and I'm sure that this board feels that, that same way. The goal is to minimize subjective comments and rumors in order to obtain board goals and priorities and yet provide for the educational needs of each student. So again, we want to make this a transparent process, and we want to try and avoid some of the things that really get in the way of, of having productive group work when we work as a committee. Listed below are 10 examples of criteria that the board will be talking about on February ninth. And Dr. Pat T. is, will be providing you with some additional information that really will talk more about descriptors for each one of these areas. And, and so what we will end up with at the end of our work session is we will have a list of criteria that you have agreed to and approved, that we can go to the committee then, and as we start to develop maps and we make the changes in boundaries and so on, the evaluation tool that we will use are the criteria that were established by the board. And so we'll be talking more about that. And so your homework for that next meeting is to familiarize yourself with that information, and there'll be more specific things that'll be coming to you from the administration. These will be fully discussed on, on the meeting at the ninth. Is that a regular meeting or a work session?
It's a regular meeting.
Regular meeting, okay. In addition to that, we think it's important to also talk about any community values or anything else that you think ought to be important that we discuss as we move towards working in a committee in, in establishing criteria. You're going to establish the boundary criteria, but are there other things that we should be talking about? Again, these are just examples. Sometimes the committees get into talking about grade configuration, and, and they, they talk about other kinds of things, that we want special programs, whether it's ESL or something, has to be in this certain building. Just a lot of different things that are listed here, and we'll talk more about those, but if there are certain community values or certain things that you believe also need to be considered, then those are things that we'll talk about at that meeting also. Again, these are just examples. I presume we're not talking about grade reconfiguration, because that's probably some discussions that you may have already had, but again, those are things that we will, we'll take care of on the ninth. So our next steps, the boundary committee is probably in the process, or you've had some discussions about that, or will be having discussions about forming that committee. I think our first committee meeting is in March, like the third or fifth or something like that, so obviously there's time to do that. We want to be able to communicate beginning at, on February ninth, and make sure that we're utilizing all the media that we have, and I know that you have a lot of different sources here in order to inform your public and what the charge is to, of that committee, and that they can follow what happens, and they can prepare for these changes that could be coming down the road in the end as we look at a final product. So it's important that communication is really, really something that we look at. And then the, the last second part is just work with the board administration to better integrate the information into decision-making, supporting world-class education. And that's what our company's about. We want to help districts provide world-class education for all their kids. And, and so we'll be talking more about that, but certainly we want to work with, with this board and administration to try and integrate those things in to this process. That's the gist of our meeting. I would entertain, entertain any questions that you have. Again, you'll be getting more information on February the ninth, what time we're meeting, and we usually take about 45 minutes to an hour in that process, so when we look at prioritizing the criteria. Again, I say prioritizing. Sometimes we do that and other times we don't. It's hard to put that this is the most important criteria, and this is the second and the third. You'll basically come up with a listing of five or six criteria, whatever they are. If there's one that you think is the most important as a group, and, and then, you know, we would certainly look at that too, but we'll have more discussions on the ninth about that.
Clay, your work with growing districts, how dynamic of a process is this typically?
Well, I think it's exciting. It's a, it's a great process. We, you know, again, it's dependent on a committee that has good representation and, and all those things that go with it, but it's a, it's a very dynamic in the fact that the work that we do, our meetings, our committee meetings basically run two hours. So we come in at 6:00 and we're done at 8:00. And in the process, we start out big picture. We talk, we talk big picture of the district, and then we work our way down to more specifics until we get to that. But there's a lot of dynamics with the committee, between the RSP and us, and it's just, it's a, it's a fun kind of thing. I will say, you know, there, there are times when it becomes, when you get down to the third and fourth meeting, certainly there are, there are, I don't say disagreements, but people have differing opinions, and we eventually end up with consensus as we get towards that time. But I think the committee folks will enjoy it. We run the, we run the meetings in a real organized manner, and we're in and out in two hours. Maybe the last meeting would take us a little bit longer, but beyond that, we're really excited about the process that we use and the outcomes that we've had. We've done this in about 60 school districts, and to my knowledge, we've had a successful outcome in, in every one. Now, that's not to say, as you will know, that not everybody, you know, gets their own way. You're going to end up, in some cases, there are going to be kids that are going to be moved and families and so on and so forth, but I think if the communication is good and it's a very transparent process, the board can feel very comfortable with that.
Yes.
So on our last meeting, we discussed that we're going to probably need between two and four recommendations based on the outcomes of a bond election. Does that affect the process at all when you're talking about the meeting times, given that you're really making different sets of recommendations?
Explain to me your two to four recommendations.
Oh, you may or may not be building.
Okay. No, you know, we'll, we will probably, in the February ninth meeting, we'll spend a lot of time setting that framework for that, and, and, but I don't think that that will have a large effect on, on our meeting times.
Because you're going to have to come up with recommendations. If this, if this bond passes, then this is what we recommend you do as far as redistricting. If it does not pass, then this is what's going to happen. That doesn't double the time?
Oh, I don't think it doubles the time.
Okay.
No. I mean, as long as we know that that's, that's going to be some of the work, then we'll have to build that in.
Have you dealt with that sort of situation in some of your previous work?
I think, yeah, we have. We have. And we've had good outcomes.
So Clay, one more time, the homework assignment for, for this group for next time is going through establishing those criteria.
Yeah, you just need to familiarize yourself with them. In your own minds, you know, as a board member, you're going to look at that criteria, and you're going to think, these are the things that are probably most important to me or to the board. And what we'll want to do is we're going to reach consensus as a board on what that, what those criteria will be.
Those are samples you can come up with around us all.
There may be other things, yeah.
And you will send those descriptors to me that I can send out to everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
You'll get, you'll get that from Stacia or Rob tomorrow.
Great. As you well know, we, we've gone through a bond referendum that failed this past September. Obviously, this is one component. We, we know as a district that this is something that is going to have to happen just due to the fact that we have some elementaries that are bursting at the seams. We have some other elementaries that have portables that are on-site at those attendance centers. I guess just the context of, of our district a little bit, we're, we're nervous because we know we're going to have a future bond referendum coming in the, the very near future, but also know, personally, I've had a lot of contacts from people asking about boundary or boundary realignment, staff members, community members, so I think there's a lot of interest out there and a lot of knowledge that this is something that has to be done. People are just waiting for it, and we haven't really started a lot of work on the committee. We've started to ask our building principals, who would be names of, of parents, because we know we want great community representation. We're just waiting for this meeting to be able to move forward and, and start contacting people, but we know there's, there's going to be great passionate people and people that are going to certainly want to be at the table to be able to help discuss this and come to a solution.
Well, you have to have all the stakeholders, you know, and obviously you want a school of people who, but, but you also need a good representation from the community.
Okay, so stakeholders, is there going to be a definitive group that we are forming committees for on the bond vote that might be coming? And do you see, you said stakeholders, is it good to get some of the same people that will be in, in parallel? A, we want to have this thing for the bond vote, and we want to talk about this redistricting. Should it be totally separate, or can we control that?
Well, I think it's two different groups.
It is two different groups. And I would say the, I think we want to make sure that, as we talked last time, that it's not a, we're going through a boundary realignment due to the fact of, of a bond referendum or a failed bond referendum. Those have to be completely separate. We're doing this because of our enrollment growth and our enrollment capacity, especially in, in multiple buildings that are just over capacity right now, and the challenges we're faced with those. So I think we want to keep those groups separate. There could be some people that are on both groups just due to the fact of involvement and certainly some of those key constituents that we have out there that would be good representatives and really good thinkers that could be at the table to help ask the right questions, to help make sure that people are moving down the right process and the right steps, and sometimes some of those people just might be the historians of the community to be able to bring more insight to those, those groups. So I think there'll be some carryover, but I think it's very important to keep these things separate. You know, we are not doing one because of the other. We're doing these in separate pathways. They've got similar time, timelines potentially, but the bottom line is, we know we have some challenges for growth and capacity and learning environments that meet our educational goals, but right now at our elementary level, we have a very short window, and within about a year and a half to two years, we're going to have many more portables at some of our elementaries that we just can't do. We've got to make some decisions as a district. So just.
I was wondering about the timing of it. I mean, we opened up a classroom somewhere, Lincoln, I think.
Lincoln.
Lincoln, a portable and an unportable at Orchard. I mean, or bond issue aside, I assume we'd be still talking about this because if something took place, we would, we would make the change this fall. Could it go another year based on all the different balls that we're trying to hold in the air?
Yep. When we've talked with Rob about this, this really process now is not intended to start next year. It's intended to be for the following year. We know that's when really some of our enrollment hits are going to take place, so we're trying to plan this out systemically and have about a 18-month viewpoint to say, next fall, we know, you know, we're going to have some challenges at Lincoln, for instance, but we think we've got some plans in place to overcome those challenges, but really the window's going to be for the following school year, for the start of the 16, 17 school year, which we're making decisions for.
Okay, so taking that, Rob, then can we apply the same timeline for July, for that sort of timeframe to begin? Can we start it later? Are you familiar with the last boundary we, we did, seven, six, seven years ago?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, it was contentious, to say the least. So I just, you mentioned a good analogy earlier. These meetings you're setting up create, there's some sort of linchpin. I didn't quite hear what I wanted to hear, but only because I heard linchpin. When all of a sudden does the boundary become the issue? And you may not know the answer to this. Or the bond becomes the issue, or both. So my question to you is to the timing of it all, can, what we saw on that sheet, can it be shifted? And is there any detriment to shift it forward as opposed to the timeline we have now? Benefit, is there a downside? Is it even steven? Does that make sense?
Forward or later?
Whatever. Later.
I mean, into the, like, June or July.
Right.
My, my answer to that, and again, Clay might be able to provide a better answer. My concern with doing something like that might be, we, we know the last bond election, there were some, some pockets of neighborhoods that might have voted certain ways due to the fact that they were concerned about attendance boundaries. They didn't know which way that was going to shift, and that's not going to go away. So that's something we need to provide clarity for as a district to make sure that we have the answers for people to be able to say. Rumors, innuendos, now to the, to the side. Here's the process we went through. It was a very inclusive process, it was a very thorough process, and because of that process, we, here's the answers for you. And that takes away all doubt from people to say, here's the outcome, here's the pathway or two pathways or three pathways that will come out from these decisions, and do that in a very, I guess, transparent way, but also to make sure that we can answer those questions when they come up, and we couldn't in the past, because they were great questions. People know attendance boundaries are going to shift. They're going to happen. It's just a matter of what they're going to look like when, when it does happen. And we were transparent through all, all of our public forums and options forums that we held to tell people, attendance boundaries will shift, they have to shift. Build a seventh elementary, or not build a seventh elementary, attendance boundaries have to shift because we cannot provide the quality of education we demand and our community demands and portables and, and other areas that we have kids sitting in hallways and closets and other locations in our district and some of our buildings.
And our schedule's dictated by the district. I mean, what meets your needs? We're a busy company, and so we have a lot of irons in the fire. When you set up a schedule like we've set here, you can see there are a lot of dates if we were to shift that one way or the other. I mean, certainly that's something we can consider, but as far as the timing and when, you know, we're operating under the, the situation that you want the final product to the board, some, somewhere done in, in the middle of May.
Right.
In preparation that you have that work done as you, as you move towards your bond. In preparation that you have that work done as you move towards your bond. So that's how we've taken on the work, and we've worked with the district on what the timeline is.
And that's certainly something the board can change and adapt if you want to, but it's something, as we walk through this process, that makes sense just to make sure we have the answers, because my fear is, if we don't have those answers for people, it's going to muddy the waters in a lot of different ways.
You talked about the boundary process being contentious, and, you know, I think, I think all of them are. I mean, you're there, in any district, you're going to move families and children, and it really comes down to, I believe, personal preferences of families and how it affects those individuals. But in the process, there are certain things that we can do to minimize that and to help the district with that.
Boy, and it's interesting, because in the end there, you said something to the effect you're pleased with your success. What do you base that on? Just the correct vote, or not as much contention, or?
I think, I think what we get back is how the board feels about the process, how it went, what the outcome was. You know, in the Johnston district, we moved, I want to say, three hundred and seventy-five students. And so, you know, well, was that successful? That depends where you live.
Exactly.
But generally, I think what you find is that how well the board felt the criteria was met, and you're not going to, you know, not everybody's going to get their, get their own way. I mean, there's just certain things that'll have to happen. But if you have a good, open, transparent process and what the thinking was behind it, and that any individual had the opportunity to provide a lot of input, then I think that's what's most important. But in the end, it comes down to board making decisions that are going to best serve your district. And in this case, you're making decisions that are going to serve your district for a number of years to come.
And I think, too, maybe Andy's point, and along, and to Doug and Jim's too, I think when we, as we move forward, I think we're going to see probably a couple of options. If this happens, this is what it's going to be, and if this happens, this is what it's going to be. But I also think that having a third party come in and help us walk down this path, because I've served on the last three bound, attendance boundary changes, that I think it's a plus for us to have someone that can step out of the emotional side of it for us and, and help us, guide us through that process. So I'm really supportive of that. I think that's, I think it's great for us, and I hear your concerns, and, well, by just looking at your faces, I know you have concerns. I do too, but I know after this last bond, that there were pockets of individuals that really wanted to know that answer. And so if we can answer that question for them and make them feel more secure as we move into the bond referendum, I think that's a plus for us too, and I think we need to answer it sooner than later, because I just think, again, if there's that unknown out there, that will make it more difficult for us. And I, you know, I know we heard that last time.
I just wanted to clarify, wasn't expressing a concern, I just wanted to make sure that RSP knew that.
Absolutely.
We had agreed last time that, that the final product is not going to be one recommendation.
Absolutely.
It's going to be a if, then, else.
Thanks for clarifying. I understood what you were saying, Doug.
And I think the last boundary study we did was in, was seven years ago, I believe. So this, this is something that's not done very often in Cedar Falls, so it's something that will gather quite a bit of interest.
Yeah. Well, we're excited about working with the group. We really look forward to February ninth, and Andy will be providing more information to you if you have any other questions that come up. If I'm close to Andy, we'd be more than happy to talk to you about them. You know, we think having a third party is a very big benefit for the district, because there's a lot of people, I don't know if your community's any different, any different, but when you get started in these things, they think you already have made a decision, that you know what you're going to do. And we go into these projects just the opposite, that maybe you don't know what you're going to do, and we're going to find a way through a committee that gets us to what we need to do.
I think an important piece that you showed to me is getting the word out that we are having these meetings, because we, before this last bond election, we had a process that blew me away. I mean, probably eight or nine different meetings and such, but yet we still got the objection, you guys weren't transparent enough. Well, okay, and so this is the same thing I'm kind of trying to bring up here in terms of this process you showed us, whether we do it now or later, and the pure timing of it. You know, one reply to folks who are objecting to it is, we have a process laid out. If, I'm not sure we're going to get done before the bond, but if you'd like to come join this meeting and see all these seven meetings we're having, then that process word will get out. Otherwise, it's sort of doing the same thing and hopefully not getting the same result, but it'd be hard pressed if folks don't understand what we're doing.
Well, we'll work with the district and work with everyone, in particular Communications Department, to make sure that where it's a transparent process, that's the biggest thing. But no decisions have been made, at least I'm going into this process, and we are. With that in mind, I think every board member on the table has some ideas and things where it could go and maybe should go, but that will be something that will come out in the long run. But we're, you know, it's, I think it's good to be able to come in and facilitate it from a third party and not have to people worry about that somebody's already made the decision. We end every committee meeting by reciting as a group, no decisions have been made. And so, but anyway, we look forward to working with you, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess I have a question for the board and Dr. Panti before our homework assignments do on the ninth. Do we need, do we need to get together prior to that?
I'm comfortable with that. It's up to the board.
I mean, I want to know. I mean, is it, are we going to work on these by ourselves individually and then come, or should we?
Good question for the third party.
Clay, are you, are you hearing what I'm asking? Do you feel that we need, we've got, there are four of us here, we've got three board members gone, we'll be coming back on the ninth. Do you think we need to take our homework assignment and come together in a work session prior to the ninth, so that we can work together as a board, so that we know where we're heading, so we stay in that forty-five minute time period? I'm just asking.
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I think it's what's the most important is for you as an individual board member to look at those criteria, and then you'll have a list that you feel, but we'll have time, we can, we can do that process in forty-five minutes to an hour.
Okay. And I'll probably just.
I'm not dictating when you're meeting.
You're on that week. You're gone that week. Okay. So maybe you can communicate with, with Dr. Panti what.
I'd certainly be up for a meeting, a pre-meeting.
Too?
Yes. I guess I'm seeing what you're saying. It wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to, like, meet for two hours to talk about it, but if we could all get together in a half hour.
Actually, for a work session.
And kick some things around for a work session, yeah.
We can set something up.
So we'll send out, how about a meeting doodle? Send it out, that way we can send it out to the other board members, know when you look at the doodle that the ones that have the greatest preference are the dates or times that we'll pick.
That's great.
So, but at least pick out every, every one that you possibly can be at, once we send it out.
Well, we use a set of clickers at these meetings, so individuals will have their own respond, thing to respond with, and so you'll respond as a board member individually on all these questions that come up, and then you'll see what, where you stand as a board from the consensus.
We're very honest for both.
Oh, I teach with the footprints, those are awesome.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any further questions? All right, good. Okay, moving on, for our information report, the student services.
Yep, very excited to have Mrs. Jill White and Dr. Tracy Johns with us this evening to give us an overview and a report on student services.
Hi, thanks for having us. Yeah, been a few years since we've been here to talk about student services.
Yes.
So I mostly oversee pre-K, sixth grade, and then some pre-12th grade, also with ELL, and Tracy oversees our secondary student services.
Junior High School and Alternative and.
So we're just going to kind of go over, kind of an overview of things that have been happening the last few years. Tracy, this is, I'll let you go over what we do.
Yeah, that snapshot. So there are a number of programs and services that fall within that student services or under that umbrella. Some of these things Jill and I tackle together, some of these things we handle individually, but there's a reason special education's at the top of the list. I think that probably consumes a lot of our time, but we also take care of that ELL piece. Jill's got that, does a great job with it. So we have our 504s, our mental health piece. We're going to talk about those four tonight, but we also work with our alternative program, with our early intervention program, our chapter 103B, which is MANT, that process and that planning and training, as well as our transition alliance program and our homebound instruction.
So we'll start by just giving you kind of an overview of our special ed services in the district. Right now, after kind of our early graduates went through, we serve about five hundred and seventy-five students in special ed, pre-K 12, and that's just sort of a breakdown. We've got around twenty-five preschool students, two hundred and seventy elementary, two hundred and sixty secondary, and then our alt and TAP kids.
And our teaching staff, we have about fifty-six, well, we don't have about, we have fifty-six special education teachers in the district. We have three preschool, twenty-five elementary, twenty-six secondary, and then one person's at the alternative program and one with our TAP program.
And so just if you're curious, I, we just include sort of a breakdown per building that shows sort of the student to teacher ratio for special ed at each building. We didn't include our St. Pass or alt program or TAP kids in there. But you can see, we know we're pretty similar in our average students teacher ratio right now. Hampton's numbers are down a bit, and Lincoln's are up a bit for them, but otherwise, we're pretty consistent with around ten to eleven students per teacher. And of course, that varies a bit by student needs, so our more significant students need more time. Obviously, we have fewer students to teachers for them.
And the high school numbers are probably down a little bit. These numbers came after our mid-year graduates, so there were a few more high school students at that point.
So next, we will talk about, I always make Tracy talk about the continuum.
Every single time. No, the good news is, I've been around long enough, I remember what it was like before we had the continuum, and we should be very proud of this continuum, because I know Jill and I field phone calls from nearby districts regularly, asking us if they can send kids to our district because we offer this. Sometimes we can accommodate that, sometimes we cannot because of our own numbers. But, you know, special education is now a service. It's no longer that place, right? That classroom on the lowest level, out by the boiler, and the kids go in at eight, and they come out at three, and that's it. We take services now to kids in a variety of ways, so from least restrictive to most restrictive. And I think it's fair to say, most of our kids probably access two or three of these points per day, okay? I would say that's the average. We, once in a while, have a high flyer with four or five, but that's rare.
Tracy, may I ask you, when did the services change to starting to take the services to this child instead of the child coming to the services?
Boy, that's a great question. I would say this continuum, within the last ten years, we've worked hard to put this in place.
Okay.
When the IDEA regulations came out in two thousand and four, when they, the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, that was really, I think, kind of spring districts to start this process.
Yeah.
And so, I think, I mean, I obviously wasn't here, but I think we kind of hit.
Oh, that one hurt.
Go on.
Okay, I was. And I was in that classroom at the end of the hall teaching, so, but I would say, we, I think, as a district, got serious about it probably eight or nine years ago.
Okay.
I think I was just starting with student services and doing a little bit of classroom, but a little student services, and I remember working on this at the time.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we think all of our kids access the first point, the least restrictive point, which is just consultation. Someone in that building is talking to someone else about what's happening with that kid, probably special education teacher, general education teacher. We have our co-teaching piece, two teachers in a gened classroom. We also have specially designed instruction in the general education classroom. We call it push-in, probably more elementary-based, because that teacher goes into that general education classroom to work specifically with that student. Our little kiddos like it, our big kids balk at it, right? They don't really want any part of that. So then we have specially designed instruction in the special education setting, and this is the first point on the continuum that really is in a special education classroom, okay? That's your basic resource model. We have special class for kids who need more than accommodations, they need modified curriculum. Special schools, we access River Hills and Bremwood more often than, than most other schools. And then we also have our homebound instruction, hospital homebound for kids who may need to work outside of a school building for a variety of reasons. Typically, it's a short-term intervention.
It's usually a pretty significant health need.
Yeah. Just some mercury those samples, yeah.
And then sort of as a little subset of our special ed presentation, we wanted to touch on our Medicaid billing, just because this is something that we've really increased, and it's a, it's a source of special ed revenue that we can get from the state. So what we do is, we're able to get reimbursed for some services that we provide to the ELL students in school. So it's a very specific list of services we can be reimbursed for. There's parent educator support for a student who either has a health plan or a behavior plan. Nursing services that are provided at school and are actually on the student's IEP, so very specific, maybe like blood testing or consultation daily. And then transportation due to an IEP need, so not just students who would ride the bus otherwise, but they have to because of their disability in order to have access to appropriate education. We partner with Timberline Billing, which is a company around Des Moines, and they help us process claims. And I just put in there, it's a team effort, because we really, everybody kind of works together for this. We have parent educators who are taking notes every day, classroom teachers go in and do summaries every week of those students. You know, Tracy and I feel things, we have lots of people working together for the Medicaid piece to fall in place. So I just, this is a sort of graph of sort of our progress that we've had over the last four years of revenue that we've brought in. It's something Tracy and I are really proud of, because we've worked really hard to get the ball rolling. You can see, there's, see if I can use my fancy pointer here. There's a breakdown here of transportation, that's something that we've really increased in the last two years of claims for. So our bus drivers are very wonderful at filling out all the logs I send them every month.
Yeah.
And they log every day that a student rides, and how far, and miles, and all these things. And then health is our biggest area, so that's health, parent educators as well as nurses. And then we get really small amounts for things like gloves and gauze. It's like a one cent for glove, but it adds up. And then behavior, so those are parent educators who work with students who have some behavior needs. So in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, we set a goal to bring in a million dollars in Medicaid claims, and we reached it. So then we increased it last year, and I said we want to bring in one point one and a quarter million, and we did, we brought in one point three, so it was very exciting. But I'll let, please talk about this. It's exciting in numbers when you see one point three million, but we don't.
It is, yeah. So, yeah, last year was over one point three million, which is exciting. Sadly, we don't get to keep all of that. Uncle Sam wants his piece of that pie, so we keep about sixty cents on the dollar, which we're thrilled with and will take in a heartbeat. It has been, I think, a terrific way or revenue source for us, and it's also allowed us to continue some of our programs and our staffing levels.
I thought, why do we, why do we have taxes? Are we exempt?
Wouldn't you think so? You can't stop letting that, that came here to us, but no, you're not.
Wow.
Actually, Jim, the forty cents that we don't get, it reverses to the state of Iowa, because it goes through DHS, and they get their percentage or take out of it.
Okay.
But I would want to comment, and you've heard me say it before, when we talked in October, these two ladies are the primary reason why we have a first positive special ed balance in 10 years, and this Medicaid funding's had a big piece of that. So kudos to those two ladies and everybody who's involved in this.
And as Doug, as Doug just said, it's kudos to them, but what it really does, then, it offsets property tax increases because typically what a district does is they run deficit with special education, which is lawful by Iowa code, and then you bill back for property tax increases for that difference, and certainly they have saved the taxpayer-funded dollars at this time. So thank you very much for doing that. Sustainable?
Yeah, we think so. We're on target to hit at least our million-dollar goal again this year, if not back up at that 1.3 mark. So we keep pushing along, stuff, paperwork.
I won't guarantee we'll have a positive balance every year.
We're going to be better than we were two years ago.
Will we knock on Mr. Nessler's door and say, hey, there were our other parent? Okay, we'll shift gears a little and talk about our English language learner program. This is a program that I do teach well. We don't have this for our pre-K students because it's a, it's an elementary and above thing. So right now, we've got three ELL teachers in the district and around 85 active students and 15 transitioning. So transitioning means that they've reached that language proficiency, but we keep a close eye on them for two or three years before they're ready to exit out and not have us kind of checking in on them and testing them year to year. Such is the brief breakdown of how many we have in each building. The parentheses are those transitioning students, because even though we don't see them every day, we still check in and consult with the teachers. And we also serve St. Pat's students, just an interesting law that even if the St. Pat's students are, come from Waterloo or outside districts, where they receive services, that's where we check on them. So we serve them mostly through consultation, but also they participate in all of our testing numbers. This is just sort of a fun fact. It's nice to see where, where all of our ELL kiddos are coming from. We have a very diverse ELL population. So whereas a lot of districts our size typically have all Hispanic or small groups, we have a wide variety. We actually have as many Arabic-speaking students as we do Spanish, so we have a really interesting population. I just took there all the, all the countries that we currently are serving and languages in our schools. We have a big population of students from the Marshall Islands in the last year, too.
Julie had a question. If it's a St. Pat student, and that's 60 cents on the dollar, does the 60 cents go to St. Pat's or does that go to the school?
We, they have to be dual-enrolled for some services, so we don't, I don't know how the funding piece works, but we don't, we don't get much funding for those services.
No, get much.
No, ELL students are weighted, and they receive about .22 weighting for a funding formula, which is different from the special education count with the 60 cents on the dollar. It actually doesn't come to as great a dollar amount for the support needed for ELL services.
But with special ed services with a St. Pat's, does that 60 cents go to St. Pat's?
Oh, gotcha. No, we get, we don't get the one oh money, but we get the weighted, we get the weighted portion.
Right. So last year was a big year of changes for our ELL program. We moved, if you recall, we talked a lot about moving from an itinerant model where all of our kids were served in one building to, or that's the program model, to itinerant models, and now all of our ELL kids go to their home school. So there's been lots of benefits for this. Kiddos are able to be in their neighborhoods. We have far fewer students refusing services than we used to have. It definitely makes it more challenging for our ELL teachers because they travel during the day, every day, to get to all of their kids. In the process, we hired an additional ELL teacher. We had a big jump. We went up about 20 kids in one school year last year. We had to write our first LOA plan, so that is a new requirement for the Department of Ed. We already had an ELL plan in place. We just had to match it to meet their needs. Basically, it just says, we'll find all of our ELLs, we'll start serving them right away. They'll have equal access to the curriculum.
What's that on you?
It's LOA versus Nichols was a really famous court case in the 70s, and so it's based after that. It was in San Francisco, and they had a big jump in their Chinese immigrant population, and they weren't serving them appropriately, so it's new for that. And then we applied for a few fund grants through AEA last year to get more families involved, and we had, and we created a backpack program, so we send home language learning resources in backpacks for the kiddos over the weekend, practice with their families. And we just had our first family night this fall, and it was really fun. We had, we brought families in and fed them dinner, and our older, second-year ELL kids came and taught kids how to play some language-based games, and it was really neat. We're gonna, we're gonna do it again in April because it was, it was such a great turnout. We had 80 people show up, and we weren't really sure what to expect. So they played games together and practiced, and they just had fun socializing. So this is kind of a fun thing that we got to do. That's just a quick graph that just kind of shows our growth in ELL over the years. We've had, we've had a big jump, as you can see, and then I just included this bottom line here because this shows the number of students who have refused services, and you can see we went from 12, 12, 13, down to four, and now we're only at one, and that was when we had the big change in our model. So we feel like it's been a major show. And then kiddos who are in the identified population but not actively served are those transitioning kids or refuse. Okay, I'll let Tracy talk about 504.
Yes. So students who might need some accommodations but who do not qualify for special education might access a 504. It's instead of going through IDEA, this is ADA. So a 504 is just a set, or a set list of accommodations to ensure that a student has access, equal access, to buildings, to activities, and to curriculum or coursework. Okay? We have a team around that student, and so it involves some of the same types of people you'd find on an IEP team, the student and the parent, of course, we always want them involved, but we have counselors, administrators, teachers, obviously. Sometimes a nurse, maybe a coach, might be involved. Back in the day, they were not very data-driven, okay? A little loosey-goosey, and it made them very difficult to track and make decisions about. They are very much more now data-driven, which has been a good thing. And we typically try to update those annually. I would say the secondary, because of our semesters and our changes in courses and in our teachers, we tend to meet twice per year. So who's eligible for a 504? Students who have a physical or who have a mental impairment that limits, substantially limits, one or more of life's activities can qualify. I think if I remember right, there are 13 different categories in the law itself, but some examples, students with ADHD, that seems to be kind of our hot topic these days, but also students with vision loss or with hearing loss seizures. You get diabetes would be another one, muscle diseases, life-threatening allergies, any, any one of a number of things can qualify if they need some accommodations. And you see the numbers there, 30 at the elementary, 32 at the junior high, and 40 at the high school. At the elementary level, typically, our school administrators or building administrators handle those, and then as we get into the secondary, our counselors typically take lead on those with administrative support. Questions on 504 or something?
And then something new to our district this year is we started providing mental health services for students at school. So we have two licensed mental health clinicians, and we partner with Blacktop Brenda Mental Health for that, and they serve every school at least one day a week. So we have one person at each elementary building one day a week, and then the high school gets two days because they're so much bigger. And we, we paid for this this year through at-risk funds and then also through a grant that we wrote for, through Super Values Promise, where they reimburse us for our students. They, the focus is for students who would otherwise not have access to services outside. So if parents are taking them to a counselor outside and they have all these services, then we don't typically provide them services at school. It's really geared at those kiddos who maybe don't have that opportunity and really need it in order to be successful at school. It's proven to be very beneficial for those populations.
Yes, terrific addition.
So even though we've only had them for one semester, just pulling some rough numbers, in our first semester, they've served 69 students, pretty evenly split between elementary and secondary. That was a total of 462 therapy sessions and included some family therapy, which, which is really exciting because we, we've learned in education that we can work on things till, you know, we're blue in the face at school, but if they're not being reinforced at home, then they're not always, not always going to change our behavior. So it's exciting that they're starting to work with families, too, at school. In addition, they make referrals for outside services when that's appropriate, so they bring in sort of our rehabilitation services, drug and rehab, more intensive counseling, psychiatrists in the area. And then they've also provided some consultation to us, so teachers go to them for ideas. They did some, your high school did PD, I think, for the building.
Yep, we had Emily come and speak to our, our secondary special education teachers and just give them a rundown on what, of what she is seeing and what they could begin to look for in the referral process. It was a well-spent 30 minutes.
So between these clinicians at the school and the traditional counselors at the schools, is there some criteria that moves them into the, a different bucket there or something?
Yes. So everyone has to go through the school counselor, and at the elementary level, the, the building principals are responsible for that, too, in order to be referred on to the mental health clinicians. So the mental health clinicians see more of like the true mental health things versus what the finance counselors do.
Nope, I think you're right on. Our counselors, probably more counselors at the, at the secondary level, kind of sort that out.
And at the elementary, it's really like a problem-solving process, I think, where you look at the students, you try interventions, and if it's not working, it's a next step.
Right. And by the time we have the kids in secondary, we have a history there that we can look back to as well. So we have a little more data to deal with by the time they get a little bit older.
That's everything. That was a, that was a lot of student services information.
In a very short amount of time.
But if you have any questions, you can always contact us. We're very happy to answer questions.
And we're never that far away.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate all the information that you gave us tonight.
I realize it was a lot of information that you all at once, but we just did it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to item G on the agenda, approving the 2013-2014 school year audit.
And we have Monica with us this evening to go over some of the audit findings.
Thank you. I'll be brief. You've all received the audit report and had a chance to look at it. I just might actually really just touch on a couple of things. First of all, these financial statements are, belong to the district. They're the responsibility of the district, and our responsibility as the auditor is to give an opinion on the financial statements. And so really, the only thing I did was on page three, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing principles." And so that's really, I'm done. No. But that's, that's our opinion. You know, that's, that's, that's what we, we do. We opine on the financial statements after we've done all of our audit procedures. And I just wanted, that, but basically, everything else in the financial statements is the responsibility of the district. You also, you have the report. You then have the management discussion and analysis, and that's just exactly what it says. The district prepares that. We review it and look at it, make sure that it works with all the rest of the financial statements. Then you have really your basic financial statements and the notes to the financial statements. Those are requirements, you know, of an audit report. And then you have the required supplementary information, which is primarily the budgetary information, and your budget was amended. However, your actual expenditures did not exceed the budget, which is a good thing. And then you have other supplementary information, which is just basically to give you more combining information and other information that's required. The schedule of expenditures of federal awards is probably the main scheduling that. It's a requirement. And then you have the internal control and compliance reports, the, the report required by governmental auditing standards and the report required by A133, which is you are, you have to have an A133 audit because your federal expenditures are greater than $500,000. They're actually about $2.6 million, I think, on the accrual basis. So that's really, you know, Doug, I know is going to have a much more detailed report. That's just what, I just want to, these are going to be available now. You have them available. We send them to the state and other places that require the financial statements. And I just want to send our thanks for the courtesies that were given to us when we do come over to audit. It's, you know, never a fun thing when the auditors come in, but, you know, the, the staff, Doug and the staff, give us everything we need, so it's a, it's a pleasure.
I can think of worse things. Rick Canales. No, actually, Monica's team is very, very accommodating and very easy to work with and quite thorough. They're, so you folks know the process. They typically will come in, is it late June or early July, and they'll spend two or three days sort of doing pre-audit work, and we box in. We're very fortunate. We're able to have them come in August every year. That usually takes four days. You're here on site, sometimes four and a half, to go through the actual field work for that process. And then when we file our CAR with the state on Octo, on the end of September, it's, it's completely done, certified, it's audited data, so we don't have to worry about ever going back in and having to amend that, that sort of thing. And that's a big plus for our school district. I've been on the other side of the street. This is a lot easier, and so we greatly appreciate that. And I have in my fingers here a couple of things. Monica already told you that it's a qualified opinion, or an unqualified opinion, excuse me. That means that that's what you want to hear. And nobody asked her if we were a high-risk or a low-risk audit.
A low risk.
And we are a low-risk audit. And she'll note that she didn't say that we had any significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. And so other than that, we're just a plain Jane audit. We're boring, and that's the way we like it. So, but we would ask the board to officially accept and approve the audit at the next school board meeting. I sort of take this and break this down for, you board members have all seen that, and we sort of slice and dice it a little bit more detail and put it more in layman's language.
On page four, it says Doug Nessler's term expires in 2014.
It's just, it's just a one, it just goes for one year.
Right.
Okay. So this is for, because it's a previous year.
Yes, this is as of June.
Just don't let him escape.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the audit report?
So moved.
Thank you, Jen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I want to just publicly thank Doug and the business office for all the work that you do. I know that you make it smooth and probably as enjoyable as it can be, and we, we do appreciate that. You know, it, we are glad that you're at the helm, and we know that you have a lot of dedicated individuals in that office, and we appreciate every one of them, so thank you.
All right, thank you for that, and hopefully you'll say that in two weeks after I show you the detailed part.
Okay, all right. With that, all in favor of approving the audit report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
And the timing couldn't have been better. Daryl Smith just walked in, and he's going to go over the plans and specifications for the upcoming summer roofing project.
Well, that worked out great. Got about five copies here, so maybe you can share. We're doing basically one roof this year. It's the old mellow roof over enclosed park, building park where the bakery and part of the central services and storage area is out on Fairview Drive there. That's an existing mellow roof that's probably been there 45 years, getting pretty bad shape. Doug and Rick wanted me to design a new roof, a new mellow roof, and that's what we've got for a base bid, is a new mellow roof. And basically, it's going to be a new mellow roof over the existing mellow roof, where we put a new framing system over the existing roof and, and put a new standing C mellow roof over that so that hopefully we get another 40, 50 years of it. So we're going to try to match color of the roof to the existing color of the, the main office building there to the north of it. There's going to be some work involved where we need to, it comes up to a, to a, to a mezzanine wall that we're going to have to take those panels off and, and replace them so that we can put our new, because we're going to be raising the roof about five or six inches from where it's at now. And so it's going to be a lot of work for that. That's a base bid. I've got an alternate bid just in case budget numbers, you know, bids come in higher than what I think, and that does happen sometimes. Got an alternate bid for basically putting a new single-ply roof over the existing mellow roof also, and that, you know, that wouldn't be the preferred option, but we've got that in there just in case numbers come in terrible. So that's the project for this year.
And also, in either option, whether we go with the metal roof or we go with the rubber roof, we are going to put some additional insulation in that area, so help to raise that.
Don't be new insulation, either roof. Yeah, yes.
Now we're taking care of that. The bus garage has been leaking for a couple of years, so it's time to kind of seal it back up and have everything a little bit more dry there. The other project that we're going to be doing, that Daryl will be associated with this summer, that does not require the formal bidding process that the roof does, is we do have a little bit of masonry work that we need to do at Pete Junior High School. We've been doing tuck pointing projects the last couple of years, and we have a small chunk, I think it's around the swimming pool area. And you'll be, at some point, we'll be bringing those quotations to you for formal board approval. But I did want you to know that there's a second piece to this, but that piece in and of itself, it will not be of the level that it requires of a public hearing and the formal approval of the project.
So the process this evening really is twofold. Number one, approve the plans and specifications, then also set the public hearing date for the next board meeting, February 9th. And due to the Iowa code requirements, when you have projects that are estimated to be over X amount, in this case $100,000, we have to have a public hearing to be able to see if anybody has any issues or concerns about re-roofing that site and then move forward with the potential approval of any bids before you see.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the proposed plans, specifications, proposed form of contract, and set a public hearing date on February 9th, 2015, at 7:00 P.M. for the 2015 roofing projects.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion or questions?
One of my questions is, not knowing what's going to happen with the mine, is there a potential that one of these buildings would be impacted with the funds or no?
I don't anticipate Pete Junior High is going to go anywhere. And central services, we've talked about some things as far as on our wish list would be to expand transportation area in some way, shape, or form. But even if that were to happen, the rest of the central services department, mechanical, electrical, custodial, storeroom, warehouse, that sort of thing could easily collapse into that space and still not have enough space for all their needs.
So money well spent regardless of what the outcome of this.
Correct.
Good question. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Daryl. Do you want these back?
I gotta give Doug his official copies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to I on the agenda, approval of the school bus bid. And Doug, you're up again.
Yep, it's my turn now. This is the annual request for purchasing school buses for next school year. And we have, we're doing, asking for something slightly different this year than what we have in the past. We're moving to a rotation where we do five, purchase five buses every two years instead of annually two buses. This is simply because our fleet's getting to the point in age, if we don't start making some modifications to that schedule, we're going to very quickly have buses in excess of 20 years in age and north of 200,000 miles on those vehicles. And so what you have in front of you in your board packet and what I have projected on the screen is, I guess, what I would call part one of our two-part request tonight. We are requesting to purchase two 84-passenger transit buses. And what we would be doing this year is trading one bus in against those two. And so in essence, we're going to increase our bus fleet by one by doing this. We're extremely short on the number of substitute or spare buses that we have in the fleet. And it would, we have asked the three dealers across the state of Iowa who we can purchase buses from to bid on this. Hoagland does not offer a front-engine transit vehicle, so they respectfully could not bid. But we did receive bids from both Thomas Bus Sales and School Bus Sales. And as you can see, the low quotation is from Thomas Bus Sales at a cost of $160,692 for those two buses. They are being very, very generous with our trade-in, as you can see, and that's a big reason why the swing. Thomas does not offer an air ride front, which has been our normal standard bidding spec. But they did bring a bus up for us to try out. Last week it was, and begrudgingly, the transportation department agreed that they probably could live with it. They still prefer the air ride for some obvious reasons, but the price difference is such that they just don't feel that they could justify recommending to the board spending the extra $30,000 for that.
And what are the differences between those two?
Air ride in the front. The bus, the bus, an air ride front bus will tend to ride smoother than a non-air ride front. Thomas doesn't offer a front air ride. And that's basically the only difference between the two buses. It's the same engine, it's the same transmission, it's the same drivetrain. They're pretty, when it comes, if you peel all the yellow off and you take all the seats back off, they're basically the same. So, and so for that, it would be our recommendation to the board to purchase the two 84-passenger transit buses from Thomas Bus Sales in Des Moines for the $160,693.
And that includes us, that's including the trade-in?
And that would be the trade-in.
Yeah, I see.
The other piece of this would be, we need to replace our oldest wheelchair lift bus. We have a total of two small and three large wheelchair lift buses. The oldest one is, had a host of mechanical issues the last couple of years, and it's been our spare, but it's getting to the point where we just need to move, to trade the bus. And the fact that we are having more and more students with special needs, wheelchair-bound, and our preschool kids, when we go on field trips with our preschool team, we really need to have three, sometimes four, all four of our full-size buses for those routes, and this bus is just not getting to the point where it's dependable enough to put it on the route anymore. And so we've asked for bids, two years ago, for board members that were on the board at that time, we bought two transit-style wheelchair buses. Our team really likes them, especially when we get into certain parts of town where the streets are a little bit narrow or we go into a cul-de-sac area or that sort of thing. And that's really been a real help for us as we try and pick up students and deliver them where they need to be. We again asked for two quotations, and you can see those quotes on the screen. There is a couple of differences this time between the vehicles. The big difference is being that the passenger seats are different, the seats that the kids sit in. Now, you might not think that that's normally a big deal, but in the other two transit buses that we purchased two years ago, there are actual rails in the flooring, so you unspin four bolts and you can slide those seats back and forth, or you can take them out. We have multiple wheelchair lift stations in each one of these buses. But if we only need one wheelchair lift station, we can add more seats back in and we can transport more kids, and obviously the reverse. If we were to buy the bus from Thomas, which is the low quote, we would not have the flexibility. Those would be, they're basically OEM or vehicle-specific type units. The other thing that's a difference, and I go back to the air ride again, Thomas doesn't offer an air ride in the front. Bluebird does. Our two other transit buses do have air ride in the front of them. And we feel for the special needs kids and wheelchair occupancy that a lot of those children have. Some of those children have oxygen tanks with them when they travel from place to place. And we would like to make the recommendation to accept the bid from School Bus Sales, which is not the low quote. But we do feel that because of the familiarity that we have with the other vehicles we have, being able to swap seats out, that sort of thing, and because of the air ride, it justifies the additional expense. And we would recommend the quote from a school bus at $98,384. And that would be, and then we would be trading our other wheelchair bus in. And all these expenditures would come out of the 2015-16 school year physical planning equivalent.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this bus bid?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Doug, I have a question. The, so the ones with the wheelchair, the wheelchair lift is only $16,000 more than without. Would it make any sense to just get more buses with the wheelchair lift? Because it doesn't cost that much more money, and then we have that flexibility?
Well, we, it's not quite that simple, because the wheel, these transit buses with the wheelchair lifts, they all have the harness system in them for the four-year-olds to transport those kids. Our other, the other two buses that we're talking about don't have any sort of harness system in them at all. So, and those harness systems meet Head Start requirements for transporting Head Start students. And it just sort of becomes an apple and orange type comparison. I can appreciate what you're saying, but if we need to be able to have the flexibility, be able to hold those little kids around town as our preschool numbers are growing, then it gives us the opportunity to be able to do that.
And I think one of the biggest changes too with this, with, I'm assuming, the bid, the first bid that we approved were 84-passenger buses. Those are the largest buses that you can purchase for student size. And the handicap wheelchair bus is not going to be an 84-passenger bus with wheelchairs.
Oh, it's not.
It's going to be a 54.
It, if it was a full-size bus, it would be the equivalent of a 59-passenger.
Oh, okay.
And I should have, and I apologize, I should have said that earlier. And the wheelbase is so much narrower, and that's the advantage of those, because I can get them in certain parts of towns. A lot of the older parts of town have narrower streets, the sharp angles to turn around. These two new transits, and this would be a copy of that, just been God sends for us to get around and pick these kids up. And because with all due respect to Jill, every time she tells us we have a new student to pick up, it's not exactly in the easiest place in town to pick them up sometimes. And it's, no disrespect to anybody, it's just where they live is hard to get to. Or they're in the end of a cul-de-sac or whatever the case might be.
Right. I was looking at dollars per bus, not dollars per student.
No, I can appreciate that. They're not cheap.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All in favor of approving the bus bid, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Onto item J on the agenda, the world language update.
Yep, this isn't an item for approval. This is something for information with the board to certainly ask questions, to understand some of the process that we've gone through, and then to, for us to help provide any thoughts for the future as well. As the board well knows, as part of the board goals, we have had a world language committee meet now for roughly a year and a half. And one of our committee members is in the audience as well. So certainly she can answer any and all questions, I'm sure, that the board may have as well. We've had a board member on this committee, Dave Williams, has sat on many of the committee meetings that we have held over the course of the last 18 months as well. Hindsight, looking back on this, it's been a great learning experience, great committee made up of really experts across the field for world language. We have taken a lot of school visits to review best practice, what other committees and other schools, or, excuse me, other school districts have provided for world language expansion for offerings. We've looked at different models and ways that this could move as far as looking at kindergarten programs, starting going through the elementary up to this high school and other programs. It's been focused on moving it down to the eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade, and so forth. What we found is there's a myriad of options that are out there. There's a lot of districts that have multiple processes, multiple courses in place. However, there's not one great model or one perfect model out there. It seems like each model that we reviewed had some challenges, had some disconnection, had some gaps within the programming or sequence. So we went back with our committee to continue to review. What are our non-negotiables? What do we expect for our programs? What do we want for our kids? What do we expect for this to look like systemically? And out of those conversations, we came forward with an understanding that for us right now, it looks best to kind of start with that end in mind process and go from a top-down model to start seeing to, seeing how we can start more opportunities and create more opportunities, starting in the eighth grade, working to the seventh grade, working to the sixth grade over time. And that was done with a lot of discussion, a lot of concepts, a lot of ideas, but basically understanding that we want to make sure that this is systemic, that this is something that we can provide for, not only now, but long-term, to be able to make sure we create the curriculum in a very thoughtful and systemic approach as well. So what we did, the committee asked for us to come back with our administrators, work with some of our teachers, work with other individuals in the district to look at options and what that could look like at the eighth grade level. Knowing that this is a fairly extensive change, even when you look at any one elective opportunity within our school system, it has some ripple effects throughout the entire system. We have before you the proposal to move forward with an eighth-grade elective course that will be called Exploring World Language and Culture. This has many ripple effects, as I just stated, at our junior highs, which changes some requirements that we had in place and changing all of our options truly to an elective format at our eighth-grade level. It would be a semester course, knowing that in the future, this would become a course that would move to the seventh-grade level, hopefully by the following year, with an eighth grade being a year-long course that would be basically our foreign language at that first level. So a level-one course in Spanish, French, and/or German. And then continuing to look into the future on how can we move that down to the elementary levels to make sure we're systemic in nature. One of the items that we did see in some school districts is that they provided maybe a sixth-grade world language opportunity. Didn't do anything for seventh and eighth grade, and then picked it back up in ninth grade. We didn't want that to have happened. We wanted to make sure it was consistent and cohesive in nature. We think that this is a great step. We prepared and looked at this proposal with our department chairs and helped walk through with them the impact, the pros and cons with this, with the future-mindedness to understand that there are other changes that will be coming with this expansion in the future. Then we brought this back to our world language committee, and the world language said, yes, this is something that we understand as a first step, believe in as a first step, and are excited by having this in place with our world language opportunities. So I'll look at a committee member to say anything else.
I think you summed it up nicely.
Okay.
And hopefully it's just the stepping stone to, you know, resolving this so that it can expand greater than just a mere elective at the eighth grade level, but, you know, here's the hoping.
Exactly. And that was, I think, the overall feelings and thoughts from the committee all the way through, that it would be great to be able to move forward with this in a large-scale format, starting year one. But realistically, we know we couldn't do that just with the scope and the change impact throughout our entire K-12 organization. But certainly, this is one of those stepping stones, and the committee felt very comfortable knowing that this is a stepping stone to bigger things.
Did anybody get their crystal ball out to think when we have it district-wide? 10 years, 20 years, anything like that?
We did not. You know, the hope is each year we can add components, but doing it this way allows us to be a little bit more strategic. If all of a sudden we have a budgetary constraint or a difficult year or limited funding from the state legislature or a budget cut across the board statewide, this allows us to say, well, we're not going to expand it down into fourth grade this year, knowing that we might have to add 1.0 or 2.0 FTEs to do that. So this gives us a little bit more systemic opportunity. However, if you start the other way and you say we're going to have it in third grade, you're almost forced into providing that opportunity in fifth grade the following year. So this allows us that limited control and flexibility that we need, especially in some of these uncertain times that we're facing as a state with, as we know, supplemental state aid and some other constraints that we're facing with the state.
Is the high school sort of ready for this, just by their current setup?
Well, I understand that the elective that we're adding next year is going to be an exploratory type, an introductory class to all three languages. So it really doesn't have an impact on our, on our four levels at the high school level. As we look at expanding that down and moving this course potentially to the seventh-grade level, then we create an eighth-grade opportunity for students that probably will have an impact, because our students will then be able to have an opportunity to have five years of a foreign language. And so at that point in time, it will impact our 9-12 world language curriculum.
Did we have any discussion, at least at the elementary, as long as we can't go in that direction, are there, you know, like, online language classes that kids can take just to dabble in it? Maybe not, you know, not in a structured setting, but if you had a parent that really wanted their child to have, you know, be introduced to a foreign language at a younger age, are there those oper, I mean, did they talk about those opportunities a little bit?
We did, and we talked about quite a bit of that. But one of our non-negotiables, we wanted this to be systemic. We don't want it to be pockets. We don't want it to just be offered in this classroom or that classroom. We want it to be, make sure that it's systemic. And we talked a little bit about how can we embed some of this into the social studies curriculum so we can do some, some, uh, common, uh, focus. Um, we didn't really come full circle on that and come back to that, but one of the things we did talk about is with our EOL courses and classes, because we want to make sure that students have the ability to become accustomed to vocabulary words, vocabulary acquisition, to be able to have some of those vocabulary words in, in foreign languages in the classroom, to talk about what is a door, what is a clock, what is a wall, what is a chair, so they have more of that access. And then we also build in some of our cultural competencies in our lower elementars or in our elementary classrooms. And that's what the focus of this class will be, is really that cultural competency piece and try to expand that as much as possible. We didn't talk the technology. Uh, we, we talked about technology, but we didn't talk about technology as an embedded piece into the elementary, uh, mainly because we want to make sure it's systemic and it's something that is offered to all kids and it's not just done in pockets.
But to your point, Joyce, I mean, thirty years ago, I'd have no opportunity, we wouldn't have, to be online to learn a language. It was all a matter of, you know, Spanish one, two, three, or community college if you wanted to be course. Now, boy, I'm kind of surprised we don't sort of have that blossoming. Yeah. I mean, I don't, my girls and, you know, I mean, it's sort of an oddity that you don't plug something in like that.
I've been trying at home to learn German
Of course.
through the, um, Army's version of the Rosetta Stone, and it's, it's not easy. I mean, if you don't, um, if you don't have someone that you can practice with, um, I mean, I still play the same little snippet over and over and over and, um, but anyway.
All you need there is ein bitte.
Sprachen die Deutsch. Anyway, but that was just my question.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
What's the educational benefit of, uh, having a little bit of three languages versus a lot of one?
Couple of different components there. Number one, we really want to focus on the cultural competency with an understanding that you're going to get some vocabulary acquisition and some, some knowledge of each of those three areas so students can pick and choose and make better decisions in the future. Um, the, uh, educational impact really is that awareness, to understand the different cultural contexts, to understand that, uh, how different countries interact and, and react, and then again, explore those vocabulary words. We know that as this course, because the hope is that we can design this content, we can design this, uh, curriculum to be fluid so as we move it down, because we can, what we envision potentially is this course be moved down further and further levels, that it allows students, especially at younger ages and younger years, to be able to gain that knowledge even, um, as, you know, fourth graders, third graders, second graders. So, it's kind of that starting point where right now it's going to be awareness of the different languages, vocabulary acquisition of the different languages, and then again, that cultural competency piece that I think is going to be a course offering very systemic in nature. Will a student coming out of this course have a leg up in Spanish one? Probably not year one, uh, but hopefully as we move forward into the future, it will certainly change and adapt because it's going to be, uh, geared towards that younger learner to be able to find in those opportunities.
So, if it becomes, it's an elective, I understand elective's correctly crazy popular and you have two hundred kids, is, is there's a chop-off point there, obviously?
Well, that is going to be interesting. That's why, you know, we had a, kind of a timeline in mind that we wanted to have this done by December so we could start registering kids, and that's occurring now, um, to be able to get, uh, students enrolled. We're not sure how populous will be, you know, and that's going to be part of the cost, um, benefit of this to determine how many potential full-time equivalent FTE teachers will need to be able to teach this. Because it's an expansion, it's not replacing anything. It's going to be addition to our curriculum, which is going to be intriguing. And then the residual effect, you know, certainly our department chairs had some questions about, uh, what is the residual effect on other, uh, departments and other courses that we currently offer. Right now, we don't know. Uh, it's going to be something through the enrollment, through the process of students registering that will play out to some extent. Uh, but right now, it could be two hundred, it could be fifty, it could be three hundred and fifty, because we have about four hundred students per class right now.
And I understand correctly, it might be interesting for the board to know, but if a ninth grader takes Spanish one, do they have the opportunity to comp, comp out, uh, test out for Spanish two and start that their sophomore year? Do I understand that correctly?
Uh, I'm not sure how, what you're asking. I mean, we don't allow students to start with Spanish two unless they, unless they do show, uh, proficiency in Spanish one.
Right, so I think Jim's asking, do they have a, a formal opportunity to show proficiency in Spanish one?
Or Spanish two, sorry. Good, you said, you take it, well, whatever, I guess.
Right.
Uh, well, as part of our acceleration plans, we would, you know, accommodate a student that would have a history of that. Uh, generally, it may be a student that has moved in from another district that has some experience in, in, you know, world language prior to getting to us, or a student that's been, uh, that has spent considerable amount of time overseas or those kinds of things, where we see that.
But rarity on this.
Rare, very rarely does that happen.
Been a few times, though not very often, where a, a student might start in eighth grade if they show an aptitude. Uh, sometimes there might be a student that would comp out, but it doesn't happen very often.
You know, are there any opportunities here to open up some more spaces for electives? Because I know that's been, you know, having two kids gone through, I mean, I, I always wish there was more space to add more of this stuff in there. I mean, are all of these things required by the state, or what, what, what's in there that we require that isn't maybe a federal or state mandate that?
Now, you're asking a lot bigger question than, than world language question, but, uh,
But these things are related.
Yeah, especially when you look at, and this is one of the reasons we had to eliminate the requirement of a student at eighth grade to, uh, select a family consumer science or industrial tech is because, uh, if you look at first semester sample schedule of a student this year, basically, they don't have any options. Uh, by the time you, you get your four core areas, uh, you have our information technology course that's in there, uh, and then you have phys ed, uh, and then a vast majority of our students in music. You basically have one other period in the day. Uh, and without, uh, you know, increasing the number of periods in a day, which would then drastically reduce the amount of time in each class, especially in the core classes, that's not something that we're, uh, we're real excited about looking at at this point in time.
You know, so info tech really is the only one that's not a core, I guess an econ maybe, right?
Well, econ is, this is a social studies.
It's a requirement.
Requirement.
You know, it's, for kids who are very tech savvy and using Word and all those kinds of things, would there be an opportunity to have a test out for that to free up a space, or?
Possibly. I mean, that's something we can look at in the future. But with, with our expansion of technology and, and our one-to-one, we've even looked at moving that course to the seventh-grade level. Uh, just because of the Chromebooks and the Schoology implementation and so forth. But, uh, when you look at the seventh-grade schedule, it's worse than the eighth-grade schedule.
I know, right.
I think in a different way, I, I thought you were talking about the elective options, so all of those are just, is that, uh?
Yeah, if you, uh,
Those are courses that are currently offered for students to take at the eighth-grade level and, and pick and choose, because we want students to have loo-, uh, some of that opportunity to look at what they're interested, what, what they want to think.
But that's, that's district chosen, it's not core driven or?
District and staff, where people say these are courses that we would, um, think eighth graders, first off, will, will gain skills in and, and need skills in, but then also have interest in as well.
Sure.
One of the things that, uh, Dan hit on is we, we are very tight because of the requirements that we have to, uh, it's called the offer and teach requirements by the Department of Education. And we have a seven-period day. If we looked at an eight-period day, the class sizes and, and class period would go down pretty significantly. Remembering that we really have kind of an eight-period day in some form or function, because we have tiger time, which is, I think, twenty-six minutes, twenty-five minutes, uh, during the school day. So, that takes a, a fairly significant chunk out of the day too for those interventions and acceleration time.
This is kind of an aside. Are, are we still with an eight-period day at the high school? Is that changing next year?
They haven't been finally determined, but they're looking at the possibility of, of moving away from that.
Going back to seventh period. How many years have we been doing the eight period? It's just a few, I mean.
Uh, three, two or three, three or three years maybe. But it's still gonna, and so I don't want to get into that too much, because it's, nothing's been finalized yet. It would still be considered an eighth gr- an eighth-grade day, it's just that right now, every student is assigned to study hall during the day, and that, that would change. So, that eight period is actually going to be a part of a power hour or similar to a tiger time.
Good discussion. Any other discussion on, um, the world language update? Thank you.
Again, this is, uh, one of those first steps, and we're excited by the first step. Um, look forward to the future with the second steps and third steps.
Moving on then to item K on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
Yeah, several different items. Uh, number one, we received some guidance about, uh, any kind of calendar waiver from the Department of Education, and we are looking and reviewing that. Uh, it looks to be very comprehensive with the guidance that they provided and, and very restrictive with what may be allowed for any kind of waiver, which right now looks like no opportunities for waivers. Um, so we'll kind of continue to, to reflect on that and, and come back with hopefully a recommendation to the board sometime in the near future with potential calendars for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Uh, we do know that the attendance center rankings, uh, more than likely will be released this Friday. Uh, the, the State Department has changed their thinking within the last few days. There are no longer going to be rankings for this first release. They're actually just going to be searchable databases to be able to determine, A, the, um, score on which, uh, growth occurs for students at each building in each district, as well as what the proficiency rates are for each school and each district across the state. So, that has changed. In the future, there will be attendance center rankings, but this first wave that evidently is going to be released in, on Friday, will not have attendance center rankings. And a couple of pieces of good news, we have been, uh, nationally recognized as a PLC model district, very, very exciting. If you go to All Things PLC on the, uh, world wide web, you will find, or the internet, you will find, uh, us listed as one of three districts in the state to receive this designation, and one of twenty-two districts across the nation that's received this designation. Very, very exciting. All Things PLC. And I could probably pull it up to show everybody here in a bit, but it's, uh, a very exciting designation and certainly well-received by our staff and, and our district with all things that, that take place. Yep.
What, what was the criteria for that, sending some stuff in and?
Lot of documentation, and on the website, it's, uh, all the documentation is laid out to be able to show what our, uh, what work has been accomplished by the district, what our, uh, scores look like and, and increases in student proficiency rates, as well as the collaborative approaches that, that we have, so. Yep, if you go to see the evidence and pull it down, there'll be a map, and it is extremely exciting for, uh, us as a district to be able to see some of these things come to fruition. And then the, uh, other aspect that I think is a very positive recognition is we have an individual that has been, uh, decreed a financial superstar, uh, by the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier across the region for business industries and, and districts. And Mr. Neffsker has received that designation, which will officially come out in, uh, March through one of their business, uh, organizations and publications that, that highlights him and the work that he does and the expanse of his, uh, knowledge base. So, very impressive.
You know, I'd kick you, but you outrank me.
Thank God for spread seats, right?
Very, very well deserved. Up on the, uh, overhead of the screen here, you can see that this is districts for any building that might be designated as a PLC building across the, the state of Iowa. And you can see this is very wide-ranging. It goes all the way from Connecticut to Florida to Texas to California that focus on professional learning communities is very, very in-depth and, and very, very targeted. And one of the, uh, great things, as you can see, not only the, the districts in the state of Iowa, there are six that have some sort of designation, uh, as, uh, one building or another building. You can see there are only three in the state of Iowa, and again, a total of twenty-two across the country that have the district designation. You can even break it down further into enrollment size, enrollment category, uh, categories. And, and again, we, uh, know that there are several larger districts across the country, across the nation. Uh, however, we have that designation in the state of Iowa. And the two in Iowa that have for larger districts is, is us and Waukees. Uh, certainly one of those districts we like to benchmark against in their, uh, experiences and, and focus on student performance. So, very exciting, very, uh, great to see that designation. And again, uh, back to, to Dr. Shaw's questions, if you click on Cedar Falls and expand that out, you can actually get to, um, the evidence of effectiveness. And down below, there is a great deal of evidence, and you can go through our, our story, our practices, our achievement data, some of the awards and recognition and the resources that are embedded within that. There was a lot of information to collect and a lot of information to upload, and certainly Dan and Pam had a great deal of, uh, effort, time, and devotion to this, and it is certainly well-deserving. We know that there will be other districts as they look to implement this process and the embeddedness of that collaborative format to, that will come and, and certainly ask questions of us in our, in our process.
Is this collectively a new list, brand-new, or, or are we added to an existing list that was already in place?
Added to an existing list. This is something that's, uh, in fact, we were notified last Friday, and we were on the website probably that afternoon, I believe. So, it was quick, and it's a compilation of an ongoing list. I'm not sure how far back it goes. Denver is listed as a local district with, uh, uh, some of their, their buildings. And they were, I believe, brought on in two thousand and twelve, I believe. So, yep.
And this is a, you have to qualify annually to be, be able to maintain your status as a model PLC. So, there'll be certain steps we have to take every single year, and we have to maintain some of the things that, uh, we've already been working for.
Well, I know when we've been out in the buildings visiting the PLCs, um, lots of great work, um, there. And, you know, it's to your credit to help us move the district forward. I know Jenny and I attended a meeting, uh, one of the first meetings at the, at U and I, do you remember that? Um, what, four years ago? Um, and the excitement in the room, and I remember thinking, will we ever get, how, how are we going to move this big machine in that direction? And with your guidance and leadership and just the dedication of our staff, um, and our administrators, it's been pretty amazing. So, sometimes we look at our cup as not being full, but, you know, today we can walk away feeling pretty proud of that designation. So, I think that's good, and I know we won't rest on our laurels. We will keep moving things forward to do better. And we've, we're, I just can't thank you enough for all that you do, um, to help with that. So, thank you.
We have wonderful people in our system. And it goes to our, our, uh, parents, our students, our, our staff, and, and it's tremendous to see. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments or concerns from the board?
Is making a longer school day on the table if we can't get that waiver?
You know, that is a very good question, and that is the model that the state has kind of rolled out in a couple of different components, a couple of different pieces, um, to, to show as an example, due to the fact that we can go to now hours, and we have an hours-based calendar, uh, go extend the school day and then cut down on the number of days you go to school. And I think the example that they view statewide is, is a district over, uh, in kind of north-central, northwest Iowa that goes to school about a hundred and sixty, I don't remember the exact number of days, a hundred and sixty-six days, a hundred and sixty-eight days, which is twelve to fourteen days less than the traditional school year in the state of Iowa, which is two and a half weeks. Um, philosophically, educationally, um, I struggle with saying we're going to add ten minutes for our school day. Uh, because if we said, hey, let's add ten minutes next year, we could actually go shorter by probably ten to twelve days theoretically. And again, there's much more complication associated with that. But I think in our, for our school district, for me philosophically, and for me as doing what's best for kids, to say, instead of, you know, eight weeks or ten weeks off during the summer, let's give them twelve weeks or thirteen weeks off during the summer, you have more, uh, gap within that retention. You have, uh, more, uh, I guess, time where students aren't going to be in those courses and the classroom and that in-depth knowledge, and then you're shortening down even the times when we work to really prepare our students to be college and career-ready. I, I struggle with that, and I don't think that's the best educational model that's out there when you're saying, let's shorten the number of days, especially at the secondary level, when you add ten minutes to the school day. It might be a minute or a minute and a half per class period, and you look at that over the course of a hundred and, well, a hundred and sixty-eight days. At that time, I don't think the educational impact weighs the same as having another fourteen days of students in a forty-five-minute classroom, a fifty-minute classroom, and what you can do with those students to help prepare them.
I'm just thinking, going along with what Jenny was saying about having extra electives, if the days are longer, it seems easier to have more things they can do in a given day.
Yeah, the challenge is only that, you know, it adds in only about a minute to the school day per class or two minutes at the most into a school day per class, which isn't a real significant time. When you say, let's, let's, uh, go to another period and you divide that out on, over an eight-period day, then that takes nine to ten to, to, in some cases, twelve minutes off of each class period, depending on your period length.
Even if you have a longer day?
It can.
I guess I'm not understanding the arithmetic.
Um, well, you take a seven-period day, uh, if you look at a seven-period day, and you divide that out for, um, that out for how many minutes we have in the day, and you add an eighth period, the division is going to be more lost time than adding in an extra ten minutes per, per day, because your ten minutes per day then is diversified through each of those periods, so you're looking at one minute added into a classroom when you're subtracting out eight to ten minutes over that course of that period, because you need to come up with that forty-five to fifty minutes in those, through those seven, seven minutes, so, or those seven periods.
What do you think colleges do that shorten the period? I mean, I, I guess that might be an easy, logical answer, but, I mean, colleges have the month off in the summer, and they only go X amount of weeks, and they do have a longer, you just think it's the natural...
Well, students take fewer classes, though.
Fewer classes, and then their blocks of time are different.
If a kid takes five classes, that's about right.
Yeah.
In a day.
Yeah, and then their block of time is different, I mean, that's why they have the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday schedule to maximize those times.
And they're supposed to work on their own all the time, which my kids do.
Well, that's one of the challenges we have. I think I forwarded on an email or a letter to the board that we sent to the legislators that really focused on some of those challenges we have, and, and one of our greatest challenges not only is alignment with some of the community colleges and, and University of Northern Iowa, but also the number of students that take AP courses, and, and the number of students that take AP courses is fairly high in Cedar Falls, and what happens now is, if we start that much later, the, the tests are dictated by, at the statewide level, excuse me, at the federal level, it eliminates about two weeks of prep time, two weeks of learning time, two weeks of activity time to help those students learn the material, to be able to take those exams, to be able to be successful in those exams. Another challenge that we are seeing right now is, I believe, May term at U and I, for courses start sometime in that mid to early May this year, June term starts June eighth, and if we look at the timeframe when we would start classes underneath what would be the non-waiver decree, none of our staff, none of our students are going to be able to take even courses in that June term, because this year, the June term would start June eighth, and if we went with that normal non-waiver start date, we would not be done by June eighth. So, it just eliminates a whole section of courses and opportunities for staff and students that normally would be there for us.
Did we approach our waiver request based on the fact that we live in a college community?
We have not approached a waiver request dialogue, yet.
I didn't know that was a part of it, you know.
But that was one of the things that the government specifically said, don't even try.
Don't try, yeah, and they were very specific.
They made basically a list of, don't even try, and each thing on the list is exactly why we want the waiver, it's kind of almost like aimed.
Right. Have we heard back from our legislators? I mean, you know, the buzz I had heard initially was, by and large, most districts are talking to their legislators, and the legislature was seeming like they were going to, I mean, I don't know if that's the governor's plan, so that he doesn't have to take the heat for it, I don't know, but it did seem like the legislator was planning to move on this. What's the latest on that?
There's some movement there, and actually, there's some bills that have been crafted and, and submitted, so right now, that's going to be that legislative process, how long that will take, we don't know. The question that we, we know that's before us is, we have to probably start ruling out, looking at some calendar options, and we're waiting for that guidance. The guidance is very concrete and specific, and it really has list points that says, you will not be successful in a waiver request unless you have thought of something that is so unique and unusual, which I'm not sure we have necessarily with, with some of our, our programs and our partnerships, even though they are unique across the state with what we provide for students. The question is, when will the legislature decide? You know, the, the optimism to me says, hopefully, they understand the demands we're under to get information out to our community, so that will happen within the next two weeks. The pessimism, pessimist in me says, this is going to be a bargaining chip that's going to be used as a political football, along with supplemental state aid, and it's going to be a compromise between supplemental state aid, calendar waivers and, and whatever else might be there, and we might not know till April.
Do we know where our legislators are standing?
When I've talked with them, they're all expect and, and I think want local control and believe that that decision should rest locally based on what's in the best interest of students, and that's the dialogue I've had with them.
We're going down tomorrow, so hopefully, we will be able to talk with them tomorrow, and that would be one of the things I think we will...
Yep.
That'll be one question we will ask.
Except one is Snowden in New York City, so we might not be able to talk with them tomorrow, it looks like.
Who's Snowden?
Looks like Senator, Senator Danielson.
Okay.
I got an email from the Southdale PTO president, Emerson Linney, and was just checking to make sure that next week, on the second, you and Dave are planning on coming.
Thank you for the reminder.
So, I was going to email her back once I got confirmation that, yes, you and Dave are...
Well, and tomorrow, Doug, you are scheduled to go to Cedar Heights, you are the only one on that schedule to go, were you planning on going?
Yeah, at seven, yeah.
At seven, okay. Anybody that would like to attend with Doug?
What day, I'm sorry?
Tomorrow.
No, I can't.
Are you, are we going to be back?
Yes.
Seven? Oh, next week at six PM on the second at Southdale.
And I'll be there tomorrow night.
If you let me go by myself, then no one can contradict what I say you believe.
You just let it go.
I'll be there, don't worry.
Jenny, if you think you can come, will you just send me a text or an email, and if, and if you can, send me one, one way or another, and I'll try to go then when we get back from Des Moines.
When are you guys going and coming back tomorrow again?
We are leaving at seven thirty, and my thought is, we'll be back about three thirty, looking at the agenda. This is in conjunction with ISEA, we're, we're going down with a couple of members.
Well, I'm going to bring up another opportunity, too. Dr. Patty and I were talking maybe tentatively on the twenty-fourth of February, going down to, on behalf of the UEN. Last year, we went with Waterloo, but they've already scheduled their date for the tenth, and, and I can't go, Dr. Patty can't go, Jenny's shaking her head, so the tenth doesn't work for quite a few of us, unless, unless, I mean, others want to go down on the tenth, but we thought maybe we, I think we sent Lou an email asking if the twenty-fourth would be okay, so maybe if that's out far enough on your radar, that we can all go down as a board on the twenty-fourth of February. And when we know that that's kind of a confirmed date, we'll send that out to everybody if that's all right. Another thing, this Friday at Area Two Six Seven is the first legislative forum, and that's scheduled at four thirty. Usually, the first half hour, if I remember right, is a little, kind of a, kind of a social-like time, so if you don't get there right at four thirty, it's not, it's not that crucial, but it usually starts with the meat of the, usually each legislator that's there talks about what they think is going on, and then there'll be an opportunity for public questions. So, that's a, that's a good time to go. If you go in on the Iowa School Board Association's website, there is a link to all of the dates for, for these forums, so you'll be able to find it. Also, maybe not this meeting, but the next meeting, I'm going to have someone give us a little tutorial on Google Docs, because you all are going back to your links, and some of you are, instead of going to the Google Doc itself, because all of those, PTA, PTO, and all the building visits are all in the Google Docs for you to access. So, as they are changed and updated, all you have to do is go into your own Google Doc off of your account, and, and they're there, and they're there. You know, if I make a change right now, you would see it, you would actually see me making the change. So, that way, you can kind of keep track of your calendars a little better than us trying to remind you, they're there.
And if we go back through the link, the initial link you sent, it's still taking you to the current one, right?
It does, but it's just easier if you just click on those four little dots, or nine, nine little dots there, and it takes you right there, without, some people can't find the emails, sorry, unless you save the email, just go to those nine little dots and you're right into that document.
Have we all signed up for all of those? I mean, or what is the reason that there's only one of us that'll attend to these meetings?
Because not everyone has signed up.
Okay. Do they, do they realize they haven't signed up, or?
Some have realized it, but...
Some sign up and forget.
Some sign up and forget.
But your names are at least.
Some don't put it on their calendar, so, anyway, so I'm just, just a reminder, it's an easy way to find it, and, you know, I trust that you put it on your calendar and that we will be at the things that we've committed to, so, anyway. I want to say one thing about Susan, why she's not here. Susan's not here tonight because this is her fifth anniversary for having her valve replaced, heart valve replaced. This is her second valve that she, heart valve that she has had replaced, and last, five years ago, when she had her valve replaced, it was very tenuous. She was very, a very sick woman. So, she's with her sister in Wisconsin, celebrating that she didn't expect to be here. So, that, that's where she is tonight, so I, I felt like everybody needs to know that.
Thank you for letting me in.
Anyway. With that, we are going to go at the conclusion of this meeting into a negotiation strategy session. You have your finger up.
I didn't know if there was any other board comments.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You know, George, I just had a court question on the PTO and PTO visits. I can't remember, did we let every, all the presidents know when we were coming?
Yes.
Okay, I just couldn't remember, I was totally having a moment that, gosh, if I didn't, did I follow up on that? Wasn't supposed to, so, okay.
You did, and if you didn't, I filled in what, who you couldn't get a hold of, so yes, we did.
Okay, good, for life, we are, that's so good, I just wanted to make sure they all knew when we were coming.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I just tried, the PTA, PTO visits and all are on my Google Drive, not Google Docs.
Google Drive, but it's in a Google Doc.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're together, all right.
Thank you. Anything else?
Good.
All right, so now, at the adjournment of this meeting, we're going to go into a negotiation strategy, strategy session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.